Can we call the meeting to order? Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to review and approve the minutes from October 25th?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open public comment? No one has anything? All right, guests. We have Kim Root and Lyle Jupson here from the Chamber of Economic Development of Rutland Region. Welcome.
I did say you were going to be first.
Sorry, I should have preempted it a little bit.
My closest stand favorite.
Yes.
Great, well, thank you very much for having us. And you know, whenever I show up, I'm asking for money, so thank you very much. Here with Kim Root, who is our Communications and Community Engagement Director. And we want to talk a little bit about the Regional Marketing Initiative, which is why you see my face once a year to come back and tell you kind of where we're at, how well we think we're doing, and to again ask you to contribute to that cause. So what I think I'd like to do is have Kim talk to you a little bit about statistics, because everybody likes to see like, what are the numbers? Like, how many people are actually moving? What are you doing? And how's it going? I'd like to then show you how much we're spending and where we're spending that money, and where the money's coming from, because it's your money. And then I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Chamber and Economic Development, because we were Reddick Rutland Economic Development Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce, and we are now one of the organizations. So all that sounds like we're going to be here all night. We will not be here all night, because we're also going over to Castleton right after this to talk to them about the exact same thing. So if you guys are over there, you're going to see us again. First, kind of turn it over to Kim, which is going to talk to you a little bit about where we are.
Yeah, so I'm just going to give you guys this little handout that has some statistics. And that is yours to keep, so you can take a peek at. We've done a really good job in the last year in pulling our data together a little bit more than we have historically. This is a project that certainly you're not going to necessarily see the data the first couple of years, because it doesn't happen every night. It takes time to move, especially across the country in many cases. So we just wrapped up our year five, and we're going into year six. So this is some really exciting data that we're able to share with everyone this year. There are six kind of high-level data points on the sheet that you just got. We've seen over 100 individuals move into Rutland counties since the start of the campaign, and that equals out to about 50 families countywide. So some of these people are single, some of them are a family of two, some of them are a family of five. So equals out to about 50 families, 100 individuals total. We've seen new families move into over 10 towns countywide. Full disclosure, many of them are moving into the city of Rutland, but a win for Rutland City is a win for our county. We are starting to see an increase in families moving to more rural towns as a result of the pandemic. So we're really excited to see that. A lot of the industries that they're coming, a lot of remote workers, that's a result of the pandemic, I'm sure that's not a surprise. But we're also seeing an uptick in healthcare workers and nonprofit leaders, which is really great to see as well throughout the county. Our concierge program, which is part of our Real Rutland Regional Marketing Initiative, that is made up of over 25 very active volunteers that represent almost all of Rutland County. We have Penny Amblay, who works for us. She operates in Proctor, so she's a great representative for your town. We're also looking for more volunteers, if you know anyone who's interested. These people are passionate about Rutland County, familiar with their towns, and they just love meeting new people. So they really serve as a personal connection for people that are interested in moving into their region. They can answer questions about what life in Proctor or Rutland County looks like, what does it like to raise kids here, what is there to do in the area? So we have had a huge success from our concierge program specifically. So every single person that's come through here and that's represented on this, those 100 individuals, all have been through our Real Rutland Concierge Program and have taken part of that complimentary service to them, so that's been great. 10-plus towns are represented through our concierge program, so again, we are looking for representatives from all 27 towns in the city of Rutland. So those are kind of some high-level points on the front page. If you flip it over to the back, we are in the fourth quarter of our campaign for this year, for 2021. So this is Q4 Campaign Strategy on the top of the page. We are using Facebook and Instagram, paid search, LinkedIn, Killington TV, I like this key in the network industry, and also display ads. The percentage that's in the middle of the page is the percent of funding that we're using for that specific media buy. So we're using 51% of our media buys for Facebook and Instagram, 17% for search. You can see the rest on the page. We're expecting to approximately 265,000 to 325,000 reach with just Facebook and Instagram alone. So these are all estimates, we're a couple of weeks into Q4. So we'll start to see some more results in the next couple of weeks. That goes until January 10th of 2022, and then we'll start Q1 for 2022 at that point. Just a couple of general Real Rutland statistics. We have about 3,000 Facebook followers, just over 1,900 on Instagram, and we have about 4,600 people on our email list. And that's about a 20% open rate, which is very, very good for email marketing. It's a pretty strong number. So I'll kind of pause there, and if anyone has any questions about some of our data or anything like that, and then I'll kick it back over to Lyle.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody on Zoom have any questions?
I will leave you with a town inventory sheet. If someone could fill that out and get it back to us. We're trying to have a broader representation of each of the towns on our website. We had been working with Stan and a few others about 10 months ago and updating our information on the town of Proctor, so that has been updated. But if there is more information that you have that we still haven't represented, feel free to fill that out and send it back over to us, and we'll be sure to update it.
Thank you.
Did you simply have a concierge from Proctor?
We have Penny. We don't, so she is staff, so she answers a lot of questions about the town of Proctor. But we would love to have additional volunteer from the town of Proctor, if anyone is interested or knows someone who's interested. We get a lot of questions about raising kids in the area. So anyone who's familiar with childcare, the school systems, that would be wonderful.
You can't go wrong with your concierge, because of the questions, you know the answers to them, because you live here. So one of the things that we want to make sure you know is how much money we're raising and how much money we're spending. And you want to remember, this is over five years. We're spending a little over $100,000 a year, about $120-plus thousand dollars a year. And you can see at the top where the money is being... What is the top? The top is the revenue line. And then you'll see where it's being spent. And you'll see way down at the bottom, which is where I always go. I always go far dish right down to see how much is left in that account. It's about $51,000 left in that account, which is money that will carry us through the next three or four months as we get more money coming in from municipalities and from our business community. It's interesting to note, note in the revenue lines at the top that the business community is the big contributor to this, at $360,000. Rutland City, who you heard Kim just say a minute ago, is really getting the major benefit in this, but everyone is getting a benefit, they put in the most as well. And then you see the other municipalities. We did get a grant, and we'll be writing for another grant. So I even want to know, when I'm doing, I want to know more specifics. Like, are there other towns other than just Proctor getting into this? Who are those businesses that are providing support? And that's what this sheet shows you. So you'll see there are other towns that are contributing to this. And we appreciate everyone, and last year, our newest member was the town of Dandy. We're going to be visiting them in a couple of weeks. So at the top, you see the businesses that are contributing to us. None of those would be surprises to you. Although the Casella Construction says that's an error, it's Casella Waste that actually is ending that amount, not Casella Construction. And then you'll see how we're spending the money. It's pretty clear where the money's going. And if you see Vermont Tap House down there, you're going to say, what's going on at the Tap House? Well, we take people out periodically when they come here. We had a woman come from, I think it was Colorado, maybe.
She's from California.
California. And if they come from California, we will take you out for pizza. So, and they will be moving here. They have bought a farm actually in Killington that they're going to be renovating, and so she and her family will be moving here. Probably worth a pizza. Any questions on how that's being spent? So we very much appreciate your support. And this is the, and I've heard me say this before when I've come, this is a 10-year plan. We're now in year five. Marketing isn't something you just stop. Marketing is something you really just need to keep going. And we are benefiting from what the state is doing. They have the work that they're doing and the money they're spending. And interestingly enough, a lot of their people are funneling through to our concierge program with them, which is really, maybe you mentioned it, it's really, we feel it's our secret sauce. We are different, because we have that volunteer concierge group, and we're pretty excited about that. It's the people that make the connections that get other people to come here. And we don't know how many other people came that didn't come through the concierge program that knew about what was going on. No one needs permission to come here and look to move here. We think there are a whole lot more people that have come. Just ask the town of Killington, which is the largest growing town, I think, in the state of Vermont, based per capita, and I think pandemic had a little bit to do with that. And this is the second one up there. If you still have questions, I think Mike told me that the money is in the budget, and we appreciate that for the coming year. He's working on your budget for the coming year. We appreciate that very much, and I'm sure that'll be conversations that you have. If you're wondering how much it is, we're asking folks for a dollar a person in your town, and that's why you'll see higher amounts in different places. That's why you'll see 16,000 for Rutland City, because that's about how many people they have. And this is just plain propaganda about everything we do at the Chamber of Economic Development. We have our annual report in here, we have more stuff than you probably are going to look at. This will go on that bookshelf at home, if you don't know where the bookshelf is, but you don't want to throw it away. I've got about three bookshelves like that. And you say, I'll look at that some other time, and then you never do. But if you do want to look at it, it's all well, what we're up to in our organization. And with that, we will do whatever we would like us to do.
Does anybody have any questions for either of them?
No, probably will after looking through here today. Handouts here. Can't pick up anything right at the moment.
Thanks, Bruce. Well, thank you both for coming and...
Appreciate it.
...presentation.
Thanks, Lyle. Thanks, Kim.
I know I don't need to say this, and I don't say it at our town, but it's a beautiful town here. And what was really nice was my youngest son got to play at your church about two weeks ago, I think.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And he had the best time playing piano at your church. So thank you for inviting him to do that, that was great.
Now we're going to watch you in Castleton to see if you say that same.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to good stuff. The girls' championship soccer team, once again.
Yes.
Great news?
Yes, nice. And if you're looking for a family evening of entertainment, not to give a shameless plug, but I'm going to plug away. Sleepy Hollow will be at Proctor High School Friday at 6:00 and Saturday at 1:00. The kids have been working really, really hard. It's going to be a great show, so highly encourage you to come and check it out.
Thank you.
And Stan's back. So that's exciting, huh? And he seemed like he had a good time, he looked refreshed, and he was ready to get right back into it.
Probably playing basketball tonight.
Yeah, here, I met with Ed Bove and a few other people over there, and they told me that he's pretty good on the basketball court.
Yeah, he travels around.
Thought they were messing with me at first.
The country. I think the last time was down in Atlanta, I believe.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Okay.
The diehard. All right, awesome. Okay, moving into the Highway Department. The TAC meeting is on October 28th.
Bruce, did you want to speak on this a little bit, or no?
No, I think you, you know, you've covered a lot in the packet here. It's really, you know, I get a lot out of it. I've been going to those meetings and want to make sure we keep the railroad bridge here on the table and hopefully get that onto a schedule.
The one on Main Street?
Yes. The way they've been doing it last year and this year, one year is basically highway projects, and then this year, be planning ahead for bridges and what have you. So it's an important year to make sure we get at least on a schedule. It probably won't get done right off, but we've got to get it on the... Keep plugging away, and with the help of the TAC, they do, they do listen. The state AOT does listen. So we've got a pretty good group that gets together. I didn't see your name listed there, but...
I was there.
Yes. You checked in, and we only had five or six in-person at the office there, but it was good to hear, you know, from some of the outlying towns that don't get to all the meetings, but we usually have a, you know, a pretty good attendance, either online or in-person, what have you. So it's a worthwhile group to keep our fingers in to make sure we get something done.
Yeah, and you made a point to bring up the bridge there at the meeting, that was good. The two things that I took away from it as well, like the Culver projects we just did over on Ormsby and Beaver. We, Rutland Regional Planning Commission was helping us report and gain that funding. They're handing that all over to the state. A lot of those towns don't like that very much, but it's just happening. So that was an update, and those are the grant and aid projects. The other thing is Stephanie Burke said she sent out an email to towns about equipment grant funding, though a lot of us didn't get those emails. And then she followed up with, if you received that last year, or the last...
Two or three years.
Four years, I think she said.
Yeah, something, yeah.
Then you weren't eligible for it this time around.
I think we did.
Yes.
We got a trench box.
Well, the trench box, I think, was through Passive or VLCT. And I think the Tamper, if I were to guess, I'd say the Tamper, or not 100%.
The Compass, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, Michael, what does TAC stand for? Do you have a question from Zoom?
Yes. Traffic Advisory Committee?
Transportation Advisory Committee.
Transportation, sorry. I'm used to it meaning Technical Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
And I'll try to do a better job of actually spelling those out in the future.
What was the question that you...
They asked what TAC stood for, and...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
Whoever is just showing up as iPhone, could you identify yourself, just so we have it on the record for attendance? I think they muted themselves, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're muted.
Does the person on, is just acknowledged as iPhone, can you actually hear what I'm saying?
Hi, I'm Angelo Lynn, and I don't know how I'm going to say it.
How do you what?
I don't know how I'm going to play it on your machine there, but I'm actually on that computer.
Well, there's two, we have you.
Okay, great.
There's another one that just says iPhone, and we don't know who that is. Okay.
Can we, can we mute them, or...
They're muted.
They're muted.
I mean, they are, but can we stop them from hearing us?
Um, I'm not sure how to do that without doing it to everybody, Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
We won't risk that right now. Okay, annual paving work update.
Paving along Larson Park Street is complete, and the state paved North Street from the bridge to Florence.
That was nice, yeah.
Yeah, that was nice.
That was a little extra, I believe, yeah.
Yeah. We probably, I didn't ask any further. One of the main reasons for that is that we plan on replacing some infrastructure along that street, and never want to dig up new asphalt, so. I didn't push it. I didn't push it.
No, no.
See, I went over that. Okay. Nick Geneva received a CDL. That's good.
So all of them had CDL, so I got them donuts for it, and...
That's good.
Yeah, a few of them took some tests this week as well, I think, to get their water certification.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I can't take any credit for any of that, so.
Did I hear that they're changing some of the CDL procedures, and it's going to be a little bit more difficult than it used to be? So it's good that they got that done. That's excellent.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else under Highway? Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A hydrant update.
All right, so I kept up with select board meetings before I showed up, so I know that, I know this isn't a new topic, all right? So I'm trying to move it along. Before I go through and list the hydrants that we've discussed in the past, I just would like to state that the Fire Chief, the Public Works Foreman, and myself had a, what I'll call, strategic meeting about how to handle the hydrants that have been listed here. And let me stress, there is no public safety concern at the time. So that's important for the public to know. So we've got Reynolds, we've got the hydrant on Reynolds, Oak, Green, Patch, Terrace, and the wastewater treatment facility. Reynolds and Oak, they both have tickets called in, all right? We're going to do boil water notices for them, and we're going to replace the valves, and those are fixed. And the Fire Chief agrees that those need to be fixed. Green, after speaking with John and the Fire Chief... So Green is in a strange location. I drove up there and looked at it, too. That street is very narrow, and where it's located, in between two houses. Fire Chief said realistically, they're never going to use that hydrant anyway. They're going to take it offline. Optional hydrants are located on Florence and North Street. Now, Patch Street does have low flow. It's only a four-inch line as well. John Corliss, the Public Works Foreman, is convinced that it's a valve issue on the actual main line that needs to be replaced. It's a bigger project, probably not something that's great to get into right before winter. It's on the list for spring, all right? And I'll skip down to the wastewater treatment facility. That should fix that hydrant as well. Terrace, it is painted black, because it is indeed going to be turned into a flushing hydrant. Optional hydrants are located on North Street, and a newer hydrant is located on Terrace. And that is my update for the hydrants to you all.
Reynolds and Oak will be done before it freezes?
Yes, that is, that is next on the list, because he's, some folks are coming in to do a wastewater... Oh, I forgot what John called it. It's not an evaluation, but it's a, and it's not a study.
Assessment?
We'll call it assessment, yeah. So they're coming in tomorrow, and it sounded really important. So he's meeting with them to get it out of the way, and then we're moving on to hydrants. I'm pushing it hard.
It's great to have something like this to reflect back on.
Yeah. Well, and I've shared it with them as well, so they know.
Hey, anything else under Water? Is there a motion to go out of Water into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing to report out on sewage, right?
Nope.
Is there a motion to go out of the Sewage Commissioner into the regular Select Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A manager's report.
All right, as always, I'll go through this, and if anyone has any questions, please feel free to interrupt me and ask. First off, 52 Main Street meeting with the President of the Preservation Trust, Chamber and Economic Development of Rutland Region. So I got my tour of the Marble Museum. We couldn't find a lot of the lights, but we had cell phones, so. All right, so in my quest for knowledge on all things Proctor, I requested this tour. And Ben Doyle, the acting president of the Preservation Trust, was the guide. He didn't shy away from the fact that he thought the Preservation Trust had steered away from their mission, their organizational mission, by purchasing the building. And I will, I will say, he kind of had the, he kind of had the presence of a landlord as we were moving through the property, which was kind of, you know, strange for someone in his role to have that kind of character to play. So, and I also found out that there's a request for proposals out, and that's been out since May. So, and I imagine you all know this as well, but if not, you do now. And if anybody's interested, I can share that link with you after the meeting. He did say that there was, there has been some interest in the building, but no one's brought any kind of offers to the table. So nothing real is happening. And Lyle kind of backed that up, too, with the ball is kind of slowly rolling on this. And there's been talk of P3s or public-private partnerships as well. Doesn't seem like any investors are really interested in that at the time. But, you know, as I stressed with Ben, I think it is important to have some kind of partnership with the town, so we can at least have an idea of what's happening across the street, right?
Yeah.
So...
We played a big part in the grant funding for them a few years ago.
Yeah.
So, so I told him that I, you know, it's their property, and so I can't take the most active role, but I would like to kind of not so much help roll the ball up the hill, but maybe stand closely by and watch. So, and as information comes in, I'll make sure to keep you all up to speed.
Good, that's a big part of our town.
Yeah, oh, yeah. He seemed to realize that, too. And, you know, he did, he stressed that he didn't want this to come off as an auction. You know, it's, they placed this request for proposals out with some type of sustainability or preservation in mind. All right, Beaver Pond winterization, I heard that it went well. And that's kind of all I have for that. The Chair of the Beaver Pond Committee, Dale Christie, said everything's put to bed for winter. The chair of the Beaver Pond Committee, Dale Christie, said everything's put to bed for winter.
The gate is locked, it wasn't locked last year, the committee decided not to, because of COVID, but we're gonna lock it, it's a standard thing to lock it for the winter, so we have done that.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
The engineers joined the contractors out at the Willow Street, or the Willow Pump Station Sewer Project. They took some core samples, and I wasn't out there for a long time, it was pretty moist, it's pretty wet back there. And, but they were able to get the equipment through, and I looked at some of the samples that came out of the ground, and it didn't, you know, nothing looked too scary, looked like good workable soil. I don't think they're gonna run into too many problems out there. I know this was a problem in the past, I will say that Stan did a good job at making sure Alan had updated easements drawn up. So, so what's nice is I've got those, I've even got kind of a checklist Excel sheet. And I, I went to the various properties last week to hand the, it's difficult because they've gotta be notarized, so I've gotta give them the paper, and I gotta convince them into coming up, Cecilia and I. But I, I got, I've got one of them done, there's a few more that need to, need to be signed. The big thing is that a lot of these properties already have deed at easements. So, these are just kinda updates. I'll go ahead and say that on the old deeds that I find, they clearly state that, that "They hereby reserve for the benefit of the village of Proctor the right to lay across said premises as a public convenience may require, public sewers and water mains, as to enter and re-enter upon said premises for the purpose of constructing, repairing, or maintaining the same, providing that whenever the ground is dug up for such purpose, it shall be restored as nearly as may be to its original condition, and that said village shall pay for any damage done to the herbage or growing crops." And those on, those on the old original deeds. And I had to translate that all from cursive, so it wasn't easy. And that's my Willow Street sewer boring update. The borings look good, and we're working through the easements. Grant and aid reimbursement for Beaver Pond, Olympus, and Ormsby was completed. The total cost of the projects was $10,672, with a local match of $2,852. And the state match was 7,000, well, the, the max which we reached was $7,820. Moving on to the, to the Arden brand, I've got it up here, is also in the Killington, what's that called? The Killington what?
Mountain Times.
Mountain Times, it was in the Mountain Times, and, I wanna thank the reporter and the Mountain Times for publishing that, 'cause it was really nice art.
What'd that cost you anyway, huh?
I know. Yeah, I'm worried I might be in debt now, but.
They were both good, yeah.
Yes, I do appreciate that. Okay, I've got some Grandpa's Knob follow-up answers from our last meeting. I was gonna email them, but I didn't know who to email them to. So, Sam Carlson emailed me, and he said, this was the day after, last night's select board meeting, he's talking about our last one. A gentleman on Zoom asked what model wind turbine is proposed for the project. He didn't know at the time, he has an answer now, it is a 1.5-megawatt Goldwind Model GW87-1500 wind turbine.
I think it was Charlotte's husband that asked that, I believe.
It was, yeah, Mr. Anderson, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and I received a letter from the town of Hubbardton today, and they asked me to read it, was that?
He said thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And so, this letter is from the town of Hubbardton, and it, it has to do with the Grandpa's Knob wind turbine, I'll go ahead and read it. Selectmen, here we are fighting industrial wind again, our town plan states no ridgeline wind, but yet we are being put to the test. David Blitterstorf wants to place a 438-foot-tall wind turbine on Grandpa's Knob to honor his childhood hero Palmer Putnam. The Hubbardton Battlefield has many, many heroes which gave up so much more. Right now, the Hubbardton Battlefield is the most pristine American Revolutionary War battlefield in America, as described on the state's introductory page Hubbardton Battlefield. The establishment of the Hubbardton Battlefield is one of the earliest attempts to preserve and commentate a Revolutionary War site initiated by a local grassroots effort that included veterans and eyewitnesses to the event. Military historians note that of all the Revolutionary and Civil War battlefields in the United States, Hubbardton Battlefield is the most evocative of the period in which the battle took place. Setting and views from the battlefield are much as they were in 1777, with open meadows and sweeping views of the green and Teconic and Adirondack Mountains. We know the towns have worked long and hard on their town plans, so as one, we need to stay together and keep the Hubbardton Battlefield and the valley leading south of Castleton free of spinning blades and flickering shadows. If one is allowed, more will follow. Will you please support the town of Hubbardton on our efforts to preserve the Hubbardton Battlefield and join us in opposing the 1.5-megawatt Grandpa's Knob wind turbine proposal? It will harm, not benefit, our community. Sincerely, Hubbardton Select Board, signed by Bob Gibbs, Chair Dwayne Gibbs, Richard Grabowski, James Casey, and Janet Maury on November 5th, 2021.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and I, I shouldn't be able to breeze through these last ones?
I'm just a.
Oh, go ahead.
Our planning commission has voted, you know, to follow our town plan, which states we are against, you know, commercial wind turbines.
They did.
I don't think it would hurt if our select board to put forth a motion like that. What's everybody think?
You have to put up the.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I had a meeting about tree law today, that was pretty interesting to me. I learned a little bit more about what a shade tree is. I provided in your packet a guide to tree law that was provided at that training, and without going into great detail, trees that are called out in a town shade tree preservation plan or were once planted by the town along the right-of-way are protected. The BLSG name change and agreement amended, I tried to do a little bit of research on the agreement, but I think it's pretty big.
Yes, I would, I haven't seen it, I just got a.
We are not full members.
Okay.
We contract their services basically is what all we do. We don't get to vote on bylaws, budgets, anything.
Oh, that's good to know, and their name has changed to the Otter Creek Watershed District.
Yeah, they wanted to get away from the individual names of the towns that are involved, so. That was the reason for that change. I did, just this afternoon, got a copy of their budget, their, the one that they're proposing is a zero increase from the present one, and there's a special budget meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Bruce and I'll try and attend that.
Okay. All right, so complaints and concerns from citizens, I think it's important that you all know that they're, what's happening around town. I don't wanna steer people's way, I want as much feedback as I can get from the community, and I don't want them to be afraid to complain to me, with that fear being that I'm gonna say their name or give their address, unless they want me to, unless, unless they ask me to. So I'll keep these general, unless someone says, hey, I want you to let me know I got a problem, okay? So, someone did report that there were vehicles along Kane Street that were unregistered, so I contacted Lieutenant Bennet. I haven't heard anything back, but hopefully that ball is rolling, I'll follow up this week. Casella Recycling Pickup, this was at 13 Tower Square, her, her recycling has not been picked up the last. Oh, go ahead.
Tower, 13 Tower Square?
Power Square, maybe?
Is that Power Square?
Ooh, did I miss, am I not understood her correctly?
I, I, we don't know where Tower is, Square is.
I'm guessing.
That's Power Square.
Yeah.
Tower Square?
I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah, Power Square is right up.
Where the fire hydrant, you went and looked at between the houses? No, that's Green Square, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Green Square.
I'm getting confused.
Right out behind the church up here, on the hill, if it is Powers Square.
Well, I still have her number, so maybe I'll call her back and just make sure.
Yeah.
Michael, would you mind just reminding the people too that they need to put it out? They're using an arm truck now, it's gotta be faced the right way, it's gotta be put out there where the truck can get at it.
Yeah. So, having worked there, I do know that if, if it's too far from the curb, they're just gonna go by.
Yep, and if it's the wrong way, sometimes they leave them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, and I called the manager, tried to get a little feedback from him. The, the excuse that the resident got was that it's a new route, they said it was a new route for them, so. So she got that, and then, and then.
Maybe the driver.
Yeah. And then the manager said that the, the, the bridge being out has had to change their protocol a little bit, so.
Different trucks.
Maybe when the bridge's back up.
Well, that's got nothing to do with the bridge, you know.
I think sometime, I mean, mine's been missed, but it's, I think they just accidentally miss it.
Yes, absolutely.
It actually happens quite a bit.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, our town is, is not laid out symmetrically for sure.
No, it makes it hard to get to some of the places, so.
Can't get there from here.
Yeah.
But they said it would be remediated, and they're, they're one guy.
They're, we've always had good luck with them.
Yeah, and they've been responsive to me as well, 'cause I worked refuse for a while, and, you know, my protocol was always just go, if, if somebody misses, when you're kind of in a small town or small city, you know, just, you can go out and pick up trash. But I will say, bigger cities like Virginia Beach, they've actually had to invest into putting cameras on the trucks because they had so many complaints. It was worth more to them to actually have the, the cameras there to prove to people that, hey, no, your trash wasn't there when we went by, you know.
Yeah.
That could be.
No, they, they'll come around if, if somebody calls from the office there, have been very responsive.
Yeah. And then the easements for Willow Street Sewer Project, I kinda touched on that a little, a little bit. If I were on the other side of the buck here, I'd also have plenty of questions for what's going on, especially for the more intrusive areas of the project. Most people have been really great to work with, there have been a few that have been a little more strong-willed about it, but like I said, we've already got the easements down. I don't want to move forward like that, but, you know, if we have to, we've got leverage. And then paving on Park Street, I think overall it went well, I've been a part of a lot of paving projects, and someone always suffers some kind of inconvenience unfortunately, but just my kind of general overview of it, it's, it went pretty quick, and most people are pretty happy with the work.
Living up there, it went very smoothly, I had to get home a couple of times, and they were great about letting us.
Yeah, very minimal delays anytime.
We've had good luck with folks over the years.
So, I ordered a read for Veterans Day, I actually found that while I was going over the general budget. There will be a service on Thursday, Bruce, you got any more to add about that?
Eleven, eleven o'clock at the park at the memorial here.
Okay.
Reverend John Sandborn will be, be there.
Okay.
What time did you say?
Eleven o'clock.
Guy wore my little Navy, United States Navy pin too, for Veterans Day this week. Oh, budget update, I was this close to finishing the general fund today, but I've got a few more things to clean up. It looked like we do, the select board does budget review at special meetings in the past.
We used to do it at regular meetings, and then it got kind of, if we got too deep into the weeds and stuff, we'd have special meetings to kind of get, get through it.
Yeah.
But our meetings are a lot shorter.
Our meetings are shorter now, I think it's a good idea to just keep them regular meetings for now, and then just do a section, if, you know, do a section, and if we don't get through, then the next time we meet.
Okay, well, maybe I'll be able to lay the general fund on you.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Do, we can move to water and sewer?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it's getting late.
Yeah, we, we would love to look at it.
One thing, just to go back a little bit, there's been some people up on some streets that have been raking their leaves into the road, and they maybe need to, if there are new people in town, you know, I'm not sure, but they, there's one area in town that there's two, three people that have been raking the leaves across the sidewalk and into the road, and, and that needs to.
So, and Bruce, that doesn't surprise, if they are new in town, that doesn't surprise me, because the city that I lived in, New York, that's what you were supposed to do. Because the city would come with a big vacuum truck, and they would pull up all the leaves for you, and that was part of fall cleanup, so it just might be that they're, they're not familiar with.
Yeah, this is up on Ormsby, and so it's kinda messy, and then it ends up being all over the road, and it's gonna, if they're, that's what they came from, and they oughta be aware of the snow coming, that you can't plow and leave snow into the, into the streets.
It's not good for the stormwater drainage either.
Right.
Plugs them up terrible, yes.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can get some information out in the future, streamline it somehow.
Yeah, maybe you put something on the website.
Yeah, I could put something on the website.
Thank you, Carol.
I'd like to add something on the website too, for the Veterans Day.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that would be nice as well.
Absolutely.
Sure.
All right, Tom, you mentioned this already, but the planning commission didn't make a motion against the Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project. The VORC committee met, we had an excellent brainstorming and review session. The application will focus on signage to connect highlighted public goods found around the town of Proctor. Examples include an updated trailhead for the carriage trails, direction to map toward location like the Sutherland Falls and Marble Bridge, and hopefully a connection to the new Beaver Pond multi-use trail. And then, lastly, if you haven't seen the website lately, Carol's been doing a lot, all right? And it really looks good, the new pictures on there look really good, and if you, if, a lot of the individual pages were blank, and now you can go to and click on a link and find a bunch of information about events and, and the happenings around town. I have put all of the Grandpa's Knob information on the homepage down to the left. So just because it's there doesn't mean that we're, that staff is partial to it or impartial to it, it's just there for informational purposes, so anything that comes across my desk from Sam Carlson or his team goes onto the homepage. And that's all I have, the manager's report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just before, I don't think any of us would have a problem, you know, budgeting, having Stan in a little bit as, to help you. If.
If needed.
Yeah, that's totally up to you.
I could probably find something for him to do.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying.
I would say if he had questions regarding some of the budget items from like last year, where you got numbers from, if you have.
You know, it, it's a struggle for us even.
Yeah. I've been getting through it pretty well, and I, and Stan was super organized. So if I see something on there that I don't quite know, like the sheriff's contract or the refuse contract, I mean, I can find it all pretty quick, so I've got that going for me, but I do have some questions, I'll probably throw at them here in the next couple of weeks, for sure.
Good, yes, sir. These, you know, budgeting is probably the biggest thing we do.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We try to do it right.
Everybody sign the bills, right?
Yep.
Okay, sheriff's report? Anybody have any questions?
No, I think they're doing them.
Yeah, a little slightly different format here, but good nevertheless. Yeah, a little slightly different format here, but, uh, good nevertheless. And we seem to be, uh, having one officer more on a regular basis, which I think helps.
Yes.
Instead of changing all the time. And our, uh, the cart, our, our speed cart disappeared there, I'm sure everybody noticed that, but, uh.
We were lucky to have it for.
Yes.
That length of time.
The, the, the speeds they, they clock here aren't outrageous.
So, I actually looked, and to, to begin a fixed permanent one of those with a solar panel is not unreasonable as hard as Costco's.
Good, West Rutland has a mine on it, yeah.
So, I mean, it's in like the $2,000 to $3,000 range, to get one that's permanently placed that has a solar panel. So that might be something to look at, 'cause I think if we had money left over in the highway fund, that might be a good.
I think that would be an excellent place to put it, so, yeah.
Yeah, or see whether we could get a, maybe a mobile one. I noticed one on Elton Street in Pittsburgh, uh.
So they seem to be a little bit more expensive.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it's.
Might be more flexible to be able to move it around than a, a fixed one.
The speed limit through town everywhere is 25, right?
Yeah, except for West Proctor over there.
Yeah.
So it'd almost be worth putting one at the entrance of town, probably?
Well, we'd go from 50 to 25.
Quick, yeah.
No, doesn't that, isn't that, it's down to 40?
On the Pittsburgh side, but not on the, the Rutland side.
Right. That one goes right to 50.
Yeah. The Pittsburgh one happens before TNT Field.
Yeah, that was new, 'cause it used to be 50 right when you left Proctor.
Nobody pays attention like I do, they, Carol.
I went to Manchester for the game, and, um, they had one down there, and it, I was speeding, and it said, "Nope," and then I got down and said, "Yep." I thought that was pretty clever.
There's one over Bridgewater that you can barely see it, but it's got flashing lights on it, not just the, the, the speed limit, but it, it gives you a warning that you're, you're over the speed limit.
That you're about to make a donation to the Bridgewater Town Fund.
They don't have anybody there anymore.
But, uh, that's their main industry in Bridgewater.
Yeah.
But they raised the speed limit.
Yeah, they did.
Yes.
Did they?
Yeah.
I like the police officer somebody's got up on.
Oh, yeah, Michael. That's scary.
It scared me.
I think that was the point.
Only once it scared me, it didn't scare me after that.
Caught on, didn't you?
Alright, um.
Carrie Stone has a comment.
Oh.
Says, "Get a second one for the cell phone traffic incoming into town off Route 3, on Route 3."
So, coming in from Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Yeah, she lives by the Pittsburgh line.
Yeah.
Speed flashing sign.
Okay, um, appoint a TAC representative and regional commissioner.
I would like to continue on that if.
I nominate Bruce.
Aye, second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, for the regional commissioner, um, Carrie Doherty is serving that role now, and Dick Horner is the alternative. I spoke to Dick, and he doesn't mind not being on it anymore, so, and I spoke to Carrie, and she wanted, from what I understood, is she wanted to remain on it.
Was okay with being the alternative?
I talked to Ed Boeb, and he didn't think it'd be a horrible idea, but I don't mind serving as the, the commissioner. But I am not, I'm totally indifferent to it. If someone else wants to take that role here, then please be my guest.
I think that would be a good thing.
What?
Have Michael do it.
Okay.
And I would put him in, uh, contact with, uh, the regional planning commission, uh, put him on good footing with them.
I know what's going on around town.
Yeah, and then have Carrie as the alternative.
Okay.
Alright. Town report printing contract.
Uh, so I spoke to towns around town, everybody's using Repro and have for a long time. So, Repro has given us their quotes, and I was nervous because I didn't get back to him right away, and there's apparently a paper shortage, but they kept the same quotes for us. So, I don't have a problem sticking with Repro since we've been doing it for a long time. I'm trying to catch up on a lot of things, so I'm pretty busy. But with that said, if the board really wants me to go out and search for other quotes, I don't mind doing it.
I think I mentioned it last year about getting quotes, just because I know what I pay, and I used to use them, and I went somewhere else.
Okay.
And ours is less for twice as many copies.
I was gonna say, you have a lot more.
Alright.
Gave you a lot more time.
Yeah.
Could I get with you about it on?
Sure.
On how I might wanna.
Definitely.
Phrase everything?
Maybe we could task Stan with that if, you know, you are busy, uh.
Enjoy that.
Give you some, free up some of your time for some.
I'll get with you about it though, too.
A little more important.
Alright.
Yeah, definitely.
So we'll go out for bids for the town plan?
Okay.
Alright. Or printing?
Printing.
Town plan.
Alright. Town report dedication.
Uh, the, the only, this is coming, so we have a, what would you call this? A, uh, petition, I guess, for author, can anybody help me out with that?
Patrick.
Arthur Sadrick?
Patrick.
To be nominated as the, uh, for, as, as the person that the town plan is dedicated to.
We didn't have anybody else, did we, before, did we talk about, I, each of your blums together?
I don't remember.
I don't know, one time we had talked about Ray.
Ray?
Oh, yeah.
He was.
Yeah.
We did, we dedicated.
That's right, yeah.
So what we, what we, what I, since I've been here, what we've done in the past is we've had a cover, which is something around town, usually photos, and then the inside is the dedication page to somebody in Proctor.
That's right, yeah.
So.
I'm sorry.
I don't know. Is there, does anybody have anybody else that they wanted to recommend, or?
Not I.
I mean, he has been on the school board for 40 years.
At least.
Well, he was on the board, but my mom got hired, and I can't say who he was.
Maybe you should have a medal in it, so.
It was him with Colonel Wilson, and.
So is there a motion to approve the recommendation to have Art Sadrick as the, um, person we dedicate the, this year's annual report to?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright. Okay, open fuel and diesel bills, or quote, bills. Um, I see here Getcha and Marcel, it, they didn't bid?
No bids.
Okay, alright, I didn't, I wanna make sure I was reading that right.
And I reached out to them again later in the week, just to make sure that they had gotten it.
Okay. So this one is, um, oil from Champlain Valley. Let's see, the fixed price is $2.50 plus 2 cents per gallon, actually .02 per gallon. Or if we pre-buy, $2.45 plus .02.
That's not a giant savings.
And the rack plus price is 15 cents per gallon plus .02. As of October 30th, 2021, the price was 2.7185. And rack price, 2.5685.
And that's from Coco, who I believe we, has a contract now, last year.
Champlain Valley? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this their diesel bid?
Yeah. This is Champlain Valley's diesel bid. Rack play, pri- bleh, rack plus price is plus 15 cents per gallon plus .02. As of October 30th, 2021, the price was $2.88. The rack price, $2.73.
That's crazy. Diesel costs more than.
Yeah.
Fuel oil. More than gasoline.
What, diesel?
It's a lot less.
True, true, yes, I'm thinking 3.88.
That's all, it's lower, and actually, the oil isn't bad either compared to.
No, compared to what?
Okay, so this is from Sam Service Center and USA Fuels. Um, rack, oh, let's make sure this is oil, yeah, um, heating oil. Um, 15 cents per gallon for rack plus price. As of October 30th, 2021, the price is, I think they put the decimal in the wrong place. 2.816, they have 2.81.6.
We're not gonna be $28, yeah.
No, it'll be $281, they have 2.81.6, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the rack price is 2.666. And the diesel is .15 per gallon for rack plus price. As of October 30th, 2021, the price was 3.209, and the rack price was 3.059.
Can you read the second, um, bid that you opened?
Sam's?
No, no, not this one.
Oh, Champlain's diesel?
Yeah.
Champlain Diesel?
It was.
I got the first one, Champlain Valley, I thought you said?
Yeah, that was for oil, but the next one was for diesel.
But then the next one.
Was a diesel.
Was diesel.
Yeah.
And that was, um, 2.88 with a rack price of 2.73.
So, Champlain's cheaper.
Yeah. So, is there a motion on the table to go with Champlain Valley fuels for both heating oil and diesel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Cannabis sales cultivation and distribution.
Do we want this to be a warning on, so this is gonna be my first town meeting? Okay, so the verbiage might not be correct. I know I haven't been using a lot of right verbiage even in other areas, but, um, this is definitely a new one to me, so. It's.
Yeah, I would think we're going.
Especially with 52 Main Street for sale, and so.
So I think that the way the law is written is that we have to, if we wanna prohibit, we have to preemptively vote to prohibit sales within town. Am I, am I constraining that correctly?
Yeah.
So, if we don't do anything, then it's permitted. So the question is, do we want, I, my question is, if, if we're gonna make that decision, I would like the voters to make that decision.
Yes.
And so I think we should put it on the town meeting ballot.
That is a big decision.
Okay, I can do a little bit more research on getting that figured out.
I can help you with that, too.
Oh, that'd be great, gee.
And I think Killington is already putting it on their town meeting, or Rutland Towns, Rutland Towns.
Yeah.
Uh, so they may be able to help you too.
Yeah, and I think Brandon has already done it. I think they might have done it at their last town meeting.
They have a facility up there now.
Yeah, already have. They have a dispensary up there, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, water fountain grant.
It's probably not called that, but we got a grant to put in a, or we didn't get a grant, but we got offered to apply for a grant to put a water fountain downstairs. Um, we've got quite a lot of things going on downstairs, I just wanna bring to your attention that we were offered it. So, with the water, it's one of the water fountains that, I believe it counts how many, uh, water bottles you've saved, and, uh, they, they give you a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars for install.
It's, they're basically a bottle filler. At the school, we've taken out the actual fountain part because of COVID, but you hold it up against the side and it fills your water bottle for you, with cold water.
So, I didn't have it on here as, as an item to make a motion on, but more or less just discussion.
Did they give you an idea for, maybe it was in there about the total installation cost?
No.
The price of the unit?
No.
No, I think we're.
You know, whatever you wanna do, Mike, it's, it's fine with me.
Just wanted to make sure, yeah, we, we've kinda got a lot going on down there right now, and.
Yeah.
Things to figure out, so I just wanted to make you guys where the, the offer was there.
Yep.
Thank you for the discretion.
Door bids.
Uh, so, the topic on door bids, I received three references from Academy Construction. One was, one was from the director of maintenance at Castleton University, saying that the company, uh, has done a good bit of work for, for them. They've done window repairs, dorm remodeling, et cetera. Uh, he highly recommends them, and will definitely use them again in the future. Uh, Allen Pools was their other reference. Um, this was Kim that I spoke to, and she said that they redid the entire showroom. Uh, the work was of high quality, they were, um, excellent with communication, and they stayed within the costs of the projects. I, I went on their Facebook page as well, they had some pictures of what they did to the, the Allen Pool showroom as well. They gave me a third reference of a house up here on Church Street, but I couldn't get ahold of them. So we got two out of three references.
I would like to see what they're, what it's gonna look like before we make a decision on something. Shouldn't we really have an idea what it's gonna look like?
Well, I would think they would share with you, like, here's a wooden door, or here's a glass door, you know, like, some type of.
I'd like to see a kind of a rough sketch, even if it's a sketch, I'd, I'd like to know before we do something. That's fine.
A sketch with their bid, right?
I haven't, have we seen it?
No.
No.
Michael, they give us a bid, have they given us a bid, or we just, at this point?
They have given us bid.
What was the first company?
Uh, so it's Academy Construction that's who won, who, who was the lowest bidder.
Okay.
Yes.
And they did outline what they, what the construction would look like, but they didn't provide a sketch.
They said glass door, right?
Correct.
I don't know, I'd just like to, to see what it's gonna look like, was rather than buy a pig and poke.
They must be able to email you.
I would think whoever they did the work for before, they even have photo, you know, they have photos of past jobs that they could show us and say, this is the, what it looked like.
I'd like to see something, not to postpone it, but, you know, I think it looks pretty nice down there.
It does.
I'd like to have it sit, so it, it looks nice, you know.
Even if they could just give us, like, this is the model of door we're gonna use, this is what it looks like. I, I mean, I don't have, we all know what a door will look like in that entry and stuff, but.
Yeah.
What will the actual door look like? What will the, you know?
Well, I, I could even go as far as to tell them what your needs are, you know. I, I think we're all in agreement that it needs to kinda flow with the rest of the construction, so I could put it, you know, just like we want it to.
I, I can't imagine somebody not supplying, I mean, if you were doing something at your house in the kitchen or something, you'd, you'd wanna have a, a sketch to.
I'm sure they have samples and examples of all the stuff they've done, just to show you.
I'd just like to.
That they're familiar with.
Yeah, I'm sure they're.
I'm sure it's not gonna be like eight-inch steel doors.
So if you could pass that on to them, we'll stick with it in the future?
I will.
Thank you. All right, bridge opening celebration.
Oh, Mr. Boucher, this is you.
No, I heard from another source that Rick Reed had a vehicle that was 1936 and I guess it belongs to his father-in-law. And I talked with Ann and she said, I didn't talk with her, I emailed her. She said, I'm sure he would be glad to drive through or whatever thing we wanted to, to have with that. And I thought it was appropriate because the bridge was built in 1936. So, we're going to have something and I think we've got a commitment from the Herald and the Brandon Reporter to come and cover it, so.
Keith from the Herald definitely, definitely said if there were some pomp and circumstance, he'd, he'd cover it.
You know, I think they could be nice and I'm kind of surprised at the date. Maybe it's.
I think it would. A long time between the flood and, and building that new bridge.
Yeah, and, you know, I went through it the other day and there's still a lot of stuff to do and.
Oh, no, no, I'm telling you, when the flood actually washed out the original North Street Bridge and then they built the new one in 1936, that's, that was a couple of years before they.
Oh, I thought you were being sarcastic.
No, 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 no.
They must spend, spend a lot of bridge money then after 27.
So, what's the date now?
Is it the 15th?
So, what's the week of the 15th? Is that this week?
The week of the 15th, but not necessarily the 15th.
It's next week.
Yeah.
That's next week.
Yeah, and we could, you know, it doesn't, don't think it has to be the day.
Oh, no.
We could plan it and say, this is the.
Right, I mean, do you want to wait till it's kind of more cleaned up around there?
Yeah, I think we ought to wait till it's cleaned up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, whenever.
All right.
Whenever it's, they're, they pulled out and said, okay, it's, it's yours.
Finished up, yeah.
Like May, June, maybe?
Well, you know, but we did, we missed out. We did this whole renovation. Because of COVID, we couldn't have a grand opening, so.
Yeah.
I think we, we should, I mean.
I think it'd be nice to have a little something. I don't know.
They've done even a lot since like the week, like the last few days, like the sidewalk looks like it's finished. They just haven't removed all the plastic stuff and, and the paving on both sides of the bridge.
No, it does look nice as there's one over at Sunday and.
Yes.
But there's still some, you know, cleanup and.
Yeah, cosmetic stuff that looks tough.
Yeah, landscaping.
I, I thought they did well. They, you know, for how much work they did.
The reporter, which is happy to provide coverage as well.
Oh, thank you, Angelo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be adjourned.